I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks.
Mr. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Dave Abdulla.
Here.
Thomas Berry.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Here.
Wait, I gotta check my name tag.
You're looking good today.
Your voice got deeper.
Lisa, take care.
Margaret Horvath is absent. Joseph Kaczynski.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
We're getting too close.
Now, we have some presentations from the mayor and our human resource director and the council.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to join me?
Garden Club, Judy?
I'm Sarah, right?
5A is B4. 6-1, this is licensing consideration. Is it there? It wasn't set up that way.
Where is the Dearborn Heights Garden Club, where they celebrate their 50th anniversary? And where is the Dearborn Heights Garden Club, was started in 1967 by Bara Russo at her home on Sherborn in Dearborn Heights. From there, the meetings moved to the Elks on Michigan Avenue, then to a church, and finally to the Cantfield Center, where they are currently held on the first Thursday of the month from September through May. And where is the Garden Club, is started and takes care of many different gardens in Dearborn Heights? And where is in 1986, the Garden Club cares for the War Memorial Garden at City Hall, and they currently care for the garden at Cantfield Center in the area around the Freedom Creed. And where is the Garden Club also created and cares for a memorial garden dedicated to all deceased members of the club? And they have planted a tree dedicated specifically to two deceased members, Charlotte Barnes and Marilyn Gander. And dedicated the tree to Rachel Corrin and Hall Military POW and MIA's in 1976. And where is one of the Garden Club members, Joyce Book, cleared out the area around the Little Red Schoolhouse and planted a tree. Members have also planted a tree on Beach Daily near the Cantfield Center. And where is the Garden Club offers a scholarship for a freshman high school student who is attending a public Michigan college and is studying the environment. And where is the Garden Club members have proven their commitment and dedication to helping to keep the city of Dearborn Heights a beautiful place, a live, working place. They obviously do a lot, don't they? Therefore, it is resolved that I, Daniel S. Plutko, Mayor of the City of Dearborn Heights, in conjunction with the City Council of Dearborn Heights, do hereby proclaim the honor and appreciation be extended to the Dearborn Heights Garden Club for its 50th anniversary. And I further declare May 4, 2017, as Dearborn Heights Garden Club Day in the city of Dearborn Heights. I further encourage all citizens to join me in recognizing the Garden Club of Dearborn Heights for 50 years of service to improving the environmental conditions in Dearborn Heights. Proclaiming the same mistake. Congratulations.
Wait, wait, we'll get this. So they can hear you on TV.
Oh, okay, I can.
They only have about 4 million viewers, I think.
Please, we meet the first Thursday of the month from September to May. Everybody is a welcome. We'd love to have some new members. Unfortunately, we don't have daycare, or student care, young care, so we can't have children. But if you want to, please come, see what we're all about. We also send books to the library, that was something I forgot to mention. And both libraries in Dearborn Heights, as a matter of fact, on the environment, on gardening, not only to the adult section, but we also have books for children, so we can get them started early. So we would love to see you, and thank you very much. We're very pleased.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Oh, Bob, do you want to... Are two students, unless they're in the hall, can you run out and see if Yara's in the hall? I don't see Yara.
Yeah, for Yara and the gentleman.
Okay, we have proclamations, we'll get it to them, but as our city clerk mentioned, you have one of them that MIT, that's helped you out on elections. And so from myself and for the council chairman, we had beautiful proclamations to honor their achievements, and I think this is only the beginning of their careers, so they obviously could not make it. We'll call up next our recreation director, Elizabeth Saboda Perry.
Some of our watershed stewards here, because they've been very helpful in all the things that the watershed stewards do.
Okay.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Elizabeth Saboda Perry, and I'm not nearly as fun as the recreation department, so I'm the human resource department. And so, so tonight is one of the nights that we come out, the two people in HR, Marion Delecta and myself, and we recognize employees that are reaching a milestone in their employment here with the city. So we're recognizing full-time employees who have a milestone anniversary. But the 4th week in April, we've made it Employee Appreciation Week. So this week, we celebrate, we recognize, and we feed lots of the great employees of the city of Dearborn Heights. We try to mix in some fun, so over this past week, our wardrobes are a little different. And so today was a patriotic day, Monday was Detroit Tigers, and tomorrow, if you come to City Hall on Wednesday, we're celebrating Wacky Wednesday. So you never know what people are going to show up with. So we'd like to recognize all of our employees, thank them once again. We don't do it nearly as much as we should, but this is the one time a year that we make sure we pause for a second, thank our full-time and our part-time employees, those employees that are even temporary, maybe only work in the summer or given a certain season. We appreciate all of them. That's what makes the city strong, it makes it a great place to be a part of. So tonight, we've invited employees, not everyone obviously could come, we have a small group that are meeting their anniversaries. So I'm gonna call the names, I know who is here, and then if they're not, we'll send it in our office mail. And like I say every year, I screw up on a few, if I screwed up on the spelling of your name, I'll correct it, and I'll get it back to you in about a year. But if I screwed up on your anniversary and I missed you, lunch is on me, and you don't even have to include me. And I will actually just buy something better than what I would buy myself, which would be peanut M&amp;M's. So with that, celebrating five years of employment, we have Dana Flamant, and Dana is from the water department. Michael Hevelina, who is in the police department, he works as a custodian there. Ivana Abraham, who works in the court, she's also celebrating five years of employment. Brittany Samansky, also in the court, celebrating five years of employment. And a very recognizable name, Judge Turfy, is celebrating 10 years of employment with the city. And for 10 years, we've been treated to listening to all the different programs at the library with the catchphrase, "See you at the library." So that's been Mr. McCaffrey. Yes, you can stand up there.
Speech, speech.
And so we know how great Michael McCaffrey is, but I have to say that he threatened me, and he said if I didn't mention the next person, he would make sure it was mentioned. So also celebrating 10 years of employment is myself. I told you I'd do it. Celebrating 15 years of employment is Mark Wolventovich. Mark works in the Department of Public Works, but many of you remember him right behind the camera for the cable station. 20 years of employment, we have Officer Jeffrey Ross. Also 20 years, Matthew Swirple, who just recently got promoted to sergeant. 20 years of service, Captain Paul Nito in the fire department, who's actually on duty tonight. 25 years of employment goes to another recognizable face in this room, David Brogan. 30 years of employment, Sergeant Mary Alexander. Also 30 years in the police department, Officer Michael Barr. And 30 years for Kevin Skazalski, who's a lieutenant in our police department. So congratulations to all these employees. Thank you for your decades of service to the city of Dearborn Heights, and if you're doing the math, it equals 265 years of dedicated service to the city of Dearborn Heights. You can even check that math.
I knew you were old.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Elizabeth Perry, and our... I see Miriam is here also, thank you, Miriam, for all you do. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda with the addition of item 9E.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
I move to approve the order of business, April 25, 2017, regular meeting at Dearborn Heights City Council, including addition of 9E as submitted.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Abdulla. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the April 11, 2017 meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Kaczynski.
The minutes from the last meeting held for the city of Dearborn Heights Council be approved as submitted.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is public hearing and comment on any items pending on the agenda. Anyone have any comments on any pending agenda items? If you can forward and briefly state your comment.
Zohair Abla, 354 Rosemary. I'm going to talk about 8A on the agenda. First, I want to thank you, Mayor, for the nice dinner with the kids. They were very happy, very, very pleasant evening. I want, I have three questions. We want to basically talk to the county to allow us to enter the property of the golf course, to inspect it and to do some test on it. Do we know for a fact, from previous experience, from any document, whether in the city or in the county, that this property is contaminated with anything?
Mr. Abdulla, just, you know, state you have a concern that, because this, at the end, there'll be times possibly for questions and answers, but now just any comment on any pending agenda items that I've already voted on?
I'll wait until then. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Bob Haddis, 500 North Beach Daily. And again, with respect to item 8A, it's hard, it says "Letter of Understanding of Right of Entry to the Warren Valley Golf Course." Since I haven't seen that letter of understanding, it's hard to comment, but so that's why I'm going to ask a couple of questions, and it may be something that the council may have had an opportunity to review, maybe in a closed session or something, which I wouldn't have been privy to. Obviously, the letter of understanding, and I think that should be a concern to the council. Is this part of the due diligence that's being done with respect to purchasing this property? Is there a history on this property, records that are available through the county and so forth? And the cost of this particular due diligence, and how do you determine who's going onto that property to do the, that type of due diligence work for you? Is that something that the council has to approve? Is that something that the council's going to look at, different people that come in? Is it something that gets bid on and so forth? I'd like to have all these questions answered. And again, since I'm limited as to what I know about this letter of understanding, I would hope that it at least opens a query on your part to ask some of these questions, and hopefully it provokes you to ask further questions and lead you into other questions that are of concern to the city. I like the idea, frankly. I think the golf course, whatever the figure is, if it gets purchased, may be a steal, and I like that price. There's people out there, and I make no bones about it. I think it's a good buy. We have a realtor up here, and again, I think it's a good buy. But I'd like to know those other concerns, I'll address later on. But I certainly, if it's part of a due diligence, I think these are questions that you really need solid answers to. And I say that with respect to having some history in the city, a little bit as to past programs, but again, those are issues that I can address later. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda, item 5A, from our city clerk Walter Persovitz, liquor license consideration for Speedway gas station.
So, Mr. Chair, we are looking, and if somebody can please guide me through this, because I don't think I've ever made a motion on a public hearing. So are we...
If I may.
Go ahead, please.
As stated in the February 22, 2017 letter, we don't ultimately have the decision to make with regard to this, namely this body doesn't. However, it says in one paragraph, "Under Administrative Rule R436.1105, the commission shall consider the opinions of the local residents, local legislative body, or local law enforcement agency with regard to the proposed business when determining whether an applicant may be issued a license or permit." So this is more a matter of whether or not this body would have some concerns, or would be in favor of this, or would take no position. And then that information would be conveyed to the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs, namely the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, as part of that, if this body wants to take an action with respect to this.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm not in favor of any gas stations selling liquor.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I did call the city clerk and follow up on this, but I think it's important to be part of a public hearing and public record, the concern that I had. And if we look at page three of the document, question number six, is the liquor license revoked, previous liquor license revoked? And then you can find the answer and explanation in the attachment number one. And of course, I understand it's a Speedway, so it's a, you know, obviously a franchise or, you know, what it may be incorporated. But the applicant had five alcohol beverage permits in Ohio that were revoked in 2002, and based on selling to minors from time to time on occasion, to underage person, or tobacco or alcohol, and not properly posting permits or signage. So that brought a flag up for me, but I know we talked about it a little bit, and I think it's good if you, if you don't mind, Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, to begin with, Mr. Chairman, I put this on the agenda as a public hearing because the public has a chance to weigh in on it. So I suggested somebody make a motion to open the public hearing, and it can begin, and then at the end of the discussion, then somebody make a motion to close the public hearing.
Why don't we do that? It's a good idea, thank you.
I would like to make a motion to open a public hearing regarding agenda item 5A, liquor license consideration for Speedway gas station.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Muscat. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Go ahead.
Okay, we have different situations going on with Michigan Liquor Control Commission and our own ordinance, and in this particular instance, which differs from the new classy license which we went about a few meetings ago, the city does not have any latitude as such to approve or deny the, this license. However, the council, the police department, and various departments, which I sent out questionnaires to the various departments for them to fill out if there was any concerns, violations, or so forth and so on, and those came back good. They are also required by the Liquor Control Commission to conform with our local ordinances. The Speedway gas station did present a plan and some blueprints along with their application, which I think we included in your backup, if I'm correct.
Yes.
So the purpose of this is if we or the public have any serious trepidation or anything, to convey that to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, and they will consider that, but as far as us saying yea or nay, that's not a, that's not an option.
So, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Go right ahead.
Is there any entities at this particular point, as far as gas stations are concerned, that do sell liquor at this point in Dearborn Heights?
Yes, sir. And, Mr. Chairman.
There's a lot.
That's the thing that struck me immediately when I looked at this, is that there's already a precedent set, there are several liquor dispensaries along with gasoline dispensaries combined, so we're really up against the wall with regard to the issue of precedent being set. Yes, sir, one. The closest one, I think, is Warren Avenue and Telegraph. They have an array of liquor there that doesn't stop, plus other convenience items that they're selling to their customers as they come and fill their gas tanks.
That's a newer... I remember the old owner didn't have that, but now the newer owner does.
This is, I've dealt there for quite some time, and it's been in place...
Probably 10 years.
Maybe, yeah. Mr. Hevelina used to own that, and now it's been sold to another entity, and they do a pretty brisk business with liquor and everything else. Very nice, clean facility. So if we're going to object, we might have a challenge on the basis of tradition already being set. I think another one is on Gully and Van Born, and I can't, I, there's another, there's a third one someplace, it doesn't come to me at the moment. But yes, there are, there are these places.
Okay, I didn't know that. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I agree with the precedent, but this one, you know, just that sixth, that page three, that item, I mean, that's, you know, quite a few violations and having revoked, even though it's a different state, certainly it raises flags, and it should, you know, just, that was my...
Yeah, why don't we do this? Why don't we communicate our concerns to the state of Michigan? And we don't like a bar passing licenses, do, police department does a background check, but yeah, why don't we communicate our concerns to the Liquor Control Commission?
And who can we count on to do that?
Well, I'm sorry, you would need to actually continue to conduct the public hearings, particularly if anyone else from the public. And then if you come to a conclusion, you would need to make a motion. And again, your motion could be anything from "we take no position," to "we're in favor of it," to "we're against it for some reason." You know, again, you don't have to take any sort of position with respect to this, but you can.
It's not a problem. Go ahead.
If I can interject, my reading of this, and counselor, help me if I'm wrong, the reading of what the Liquor Control Commission has conveyed to us is, this has been approved, and we don't have, you know, we don't have this type of latitude unless there is a serious question of what the problem is. I, I don't mean to be...
No, this is not a, this is not a revocation. This is not suggesting a revocation.
No, but...
And it doesn't, I don't see where it specifically states that it has already been...
It says it's approved by the Liquor Control Commission, subject to them conforming to local ordinances and requirements.
I agree with the clerk. I think this is currency.
They have, they have...
Yeah, but that's, but what I'm saying is, is that it says they shall consider the opinions. But this is not to say that they have to. It's just that they have to end up doing something dispositive based on what this body does, unlike if it was an issue having to do with revocation. This is, this is new. But, you know, my suggestion would be that you be careful in terms of what you would end up stating in this particular situation, if it's based on something that might be considered to be, I mean, for example, the issues that were raised were from, I believe, 2002 in Ohio.
Yeah, but I mean, we, we can, we can communicate our position and our opinion.
Sure, you can. That's, that's what I read specifically at the beginning of this, to put this into context. This body does not have the ability to, to privet the...
We don't have to approve it. Yeah, they don't, they don't, we don't authorize or not authorize. The only thing it says in here is, "Under Administrative Rule R436, I'm sorry, the commission shall consider the opinions of the local residents, local legislative body, or local law enforcement agency with regard to the proposed business when determining whether or not an applicant may be issued a license." So they're just gonna take our opinion into consideration only.
Exactly. That's what the...
We're not the final say-so, yes or no.
Exactly, that is correct.
Anybody in the audience have any, any residents have any comments? Any residents? Wait a minute. But this isn't...
What is public opinion? Yes, it should be.
Public opinion?
Yes, it should be. You hear?
Drapkowski, Columbia Street. Not too long ago, they applied for, to rebuild their building and make it all new. Why wasn't this brought before the council or the planning commission that they were going to bring that in? The liquor and all the other things.
Yeah, it's not something we pass on, it sounds like.
But it's part of the redesign of the building. So obviously, they knew ahead of time that they wanted to do this, so why wasn't it brought forth then?
And we have one other comment? Anybody?
You ought to probably give your name and your street for the record, because it's a public hearing, it's important that...
He did.
I did. I'll repeat it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Drapkowski, Columbia Street.
Okay. I just think for the record...
Deb Brown England, Silver Lane. I agree with Councilwoman Berry, I think that gas stations shouldn't sell liquor at all, but since we've already went past that, I think that if you had your license revoked, what, five times? And even if that was 15 years ago, that should be a definite consideration, and I would urge you to continue on with the letter saying that maybe you don't disagree, or to look into the background of that person, because that, that is way too many times to get, if your driver's license revoked that time, you probably wouldn't get your driver's license back, period, so...
The only thing, Debbie, just to add to that, though, although personally, I'm against it being sold in gas stations, but just, just in all fairness, what it says in there, this was in 2002, there was five incidences out of 2,700 gasoline gas stations owned by Speedway LLC, so this is the total, well, I don't know if it's the total...
So it's the whole company, it's not particularly this person?
It's not that person, no. It's 27 out of 2,700 gas stations owned by Speedway nationwide, the one in Ohio, corporate, in other words. The one in Ohio had the five incidences in 2002, and it's been reinstated.
Do we know if this is a corporation?
This is a corporate store?
So it's not, it's not a franchise?
Yeah, because it says here, Speedway LLC, which is Incorporated, it says that's the applicant, it's got applicant in it.
Okay.
So it's a corporate store.
Is it corporate? I see the problem with that, I just, since it's so close, I don't know if we've had any of those shops done in Michigan where they do that, and maybe ask them to look in to see if there's anything in Michigan that would relate to that, possibly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk Persovitz?
To, just to answer a couple of questions to Mr. Drapkowski, they're not required to come, this is, this is their application through the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. This has, that's their step. has...that's their steps, to go through the state. They're applying for an SDM license, and that's the procedure. To answer Ms. England, the Liquor Control Commission has already given them conditional approval. They have investigated these deficiencies or problems that they've had in the past, and they do not feel that they're material. So, those things, what they are asking the city to weigh in on is just if there's some...and I don't want to call anybody's objection frivolous, but just to say we don't want liquor sold at the gas station, we don't have...that's not a...it would have to be some kind of concrete local issue that there's a zoning, there's something like that. But sans that, it's just, this public hearing is to listen to that and to consider if there's anything, the council does not approve or not approve this license, we just have this hearing. And if the council makes a recommendation that they see nothing objectionable, I go ahead and issue the license to them, because they have applied and met everything from the Liquor Control Commission. And by the way, we have another one I just got today coming down the pike, so, just so you know.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Any other comments from anyone? Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, move to close. We need to have a motion moved to close.
Support.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any other motion on this item? The next item on the agenda, Item Six, Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
Council, the current claims, six, among through six-twenty-two, as presented.
Support.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman...
Oh, he called, so go ahead.
Councilman Musket.
I have four items here that I'd like to ask some questions to, if you don't mind. The first one is on six-two. There's a...on Page Three, just below the middle of the page, it was environmental issues for the purchase of property, and it's being charged to the Water Department. And I'd like to know why that would be the Water Department. It's a telephone conference with Mr. Miyaki.
Yeah, Patrick only deals in water issues, but he was talking to you...
He was talking to me about potential due diligence having to do with Warren Valley.
Well, how would that concern water?
Perhaps the environmental issues is why. In other words, but it might be more appropriately under the council as well.
Yeah, I'd really like to know a little bit more about that. It just...
We'll move it over to the general fund, although one could argue that the Warren Valley's issues, if it was developed, would become water and sewer issues. But I have...I will direct that that fifty-four dollars be directed over to the general fund.
Yeah, thank you, and that's the first item. The second item on six-six, the Cross Connection Control Program, I don't know where that's You know, you might know by the invoice numbers or the account numbers. I'm not privy to the account numbers. Those are fraught, and it would be nice to know. When they put these on, it tells us where it's located at.
This is a...we're under contract. This is a monthly fee for backflow prevention inspections for our entire city, all the businesses and our buildings as well.
Yeah, it would be nice if they have that on there, because I think I asked about that before, and it was backflow.
I probably do have a list that I could email you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And then, my...another one here is six-eight, request for the Water Department on repairs of vehicles, and they look like they're police cars to me. Eleven Crown Victoria, black number, I believe, fourteen, and then another one is black car number three. Another one here for black number thirteen, Ford Explorer Silver. They look like they're all police departments, and we're being charged $2,499.81 by the Water Department. And that should have been caught immediately.
Mr. Chairman, it clearly says Police Department on it. Please, Dearborn Heights Police, and this is clearly vehicle oil changes, you know, that type of maintenance. So, it's why it's Water Department as well.
It should be charged to the Police Department.
It sounds like our powers.
I didn't even...I didn't catch it when, you know...
Well, you didn't even see it.
You didn't even see it, I don't think.
I don't know how...
So, I think you're off the hook, though. It sounds like our powers. And the last one I have is the Wade and Trim Engineering Assistance Services. Again, I don't know where you're doing the work.
What's the number, please?
It's, I'm sorry, six-eighteen.
Thank you.
Six-eighteen. Mr. Brooks, do you have any insight on that?
There's no description.
Six-eighteen.
Six-eighteen. Item, Claim six-eighteen.
There was a breakdown with that invoice, maybe it didn't get with the package. But part of it was with revalidation of Loma requests from residents. It's attending a meeting on Rouge Valley flows with Wayne County, and assisting Department of Public Works on the water and sewer budget, doing some updates to the sanitary sewer maps, and we did a...prepare a map for Hanover Courier grant application.
All right, thank you.
I can use a copy of it.
Well, some of that looks like that ought to be charged, water and sewer.
Yes, I was thinking along that lines.
So, our controller...oh, let's talk about the allocation on these.
And, you know, I'm still waiting for the backup on the changes that we made before at Van Born and Telegraph and the bridges, and I have them, so I'm hoping I get the backup on the other ones and put it in in minutes, so we have that on record.
The issue that Cory ends up being charged, it always starts with water, because they took the work or they ordered the park, but then, when it comes to our office, it gets realigned.
Because I was promised the backup on that to change, so...on the turn, left-hand turn at Van Born and the bridge work at Madison and Gully, and that's gotta be part of the record, that it was changed. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Abdullah?
This is in regards to Item Number six-ten, six-dash-ten, and this is for Corporation Council, Gary Miyaki. On...I'm gonna give you a chance to pull it up first, but on the second page end, this would be the two charges from March the fourth of seventeen and March the fifth of seventeen. On it, it says, continuing research draft opinion regarding possible reorganization of the Building and Engineering Department, which was almost six and a quarter hours, $837. And then, the next one is complete research, I mean, same thing, possible reorganization of the Building and Engineering Department. And this was seven hours and seven-point-three hours, $985. And what I'm wondering about, I...I'm not aware of anything as far as the Building and Engineering Department, so I don't know if this is a Mohammed question, or this is something you can answer what this is exactly about.
We're all well aware of it. Looking, we always look to get more efficient and to do things better if we can. There were issues and questions that I had, whether or not some of these modifications could be done, because we want to stay within the confines of the city charter. So, Mr. Miyaki's review was to see if those are in keeping. And we currently are talking, it's no big secret amongst us, when we're at a point that we have an agreement on how we'd like to reorganize, we will bring that to the council. But we are always looking at better ways to do it, but I was...both the director, myself, and the city attorney realized that we had to make sure that any modifications we made were fine under the charter.
So, this is coming to us eventually?
If it's such that we come to an agreement on the reorganization, and then we would bring it.
There are actually three sets of issues. Charter issues, the tax issues, and issues between departments and under state law, which was significantly revised recently as well. So, it was time-consuming. And probably on the weekend, I would imagine.
It was time-consuming.
Oh, okay.
And probably, at least part of this, was on a weekend, if I recall correctly. So, I do remember this.
No time and a half?
No time and a half for me.
Good. I'd love to present it, but it's not at a point to be presented yet. And we'll work out all the things, and then we'll bring it to the council. If you look at the budget, everything is status quo as...
I just don't want too much spent on this, on something that we're still not sure what this is, at least even an idea of what it's about.
It...I think it will be...it would be a good change. I think it's a positive for everybody. And now that we got some green lights and the parameters we can operate on, we're finishing it up.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, under consideration of bids, Item seven-A, return of bid bonds for completion of demolition and curb extensions on Hanover and Madison. Mr. Chair. Councilman Berry.
I just have a comment. I'm not going to make a motion here. The bid bonds that were withheld from this group were to secure the work completely. I don't know if it's in good practice to return that bid bond when the work hasn't been completed. I know they intend on doing it in the next few weeks, and I'd certainly be happy to support a motion to return a bid bond after it's been completed and inspected by our building department.
It does say that going here, because it says upon a successful completion of the curb extensions.
Yeah, we want to do exactly what you said.
Yeah, she says because the weather has now broken, the curb extension should be installed during the next few weeks, the second paragraph.
Can I just point a clarification? The grant itself had on demolish and bring it back to grade. They couldn't do the curb extensions, so while they've been demolished a few months ago, the curb extensions weren't completed.
Right.
So, what I'm asking for is, once the curb extensions are completed, to return the big...to return the bid bond.
So, once the work is done?
It says up on the first paragraph. On the first paragraph, it has it, upon completion of the properties.
Mr. Chairman?
I believe that covers it.
Yeah.
That's fine, make a motion.
I move council approve and authorize a comptroller to return the bid bonds to McMillan Group, Inc., upon successful completion of the curb extensions at two-three-three-four-four-zero and two-three-four-two-zero and two-three-four-three-zero Hanover and five-three-six-zero Madison, as outlined in seven-A.
Second. Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any further discussion?
There's an extra...yeah.
Any further discussion?
Did I add an extra number?
It was on there.
It's in a letter, but we don't have any six-digit addresses that I'm aware of.
No, it is correct in the body of the...
Two-three-three-four-four?
No, two-three-three-four-zero.
I travel all around the city, I don't know a single...
It's on top here.
I'm sorry. I'm reading down at the bottom.
But it's in the letter, so you said as outlined, it's good.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, Item seven-B, tabulation of bids, Parkland Park Tennis Court Restoration Project.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
I move city council concur and approve awarding the bid to apply armor crack repair system to the two tennis courts located at Parkland Park to Goddard Coatings Company. The amount, the total amount, should be $15,985. The funds for this project has been approved in the city 2014-15 Wayne County Park Millage Fund allotment, as submitted in seven-B.
Second. Second by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Mr. Chair. Councilman Musket.
Is Mr. Gribble here?
No.
Has anybody tried to contact the American Tennis Association to help fund? Because I've been told in the past, they help cities with tennis courts and things of that nature to promote the sport.
I mean, I just...
I mean, I just said some food for thought for next time, that we can contact them and see whatever they can do to help us. Okay? Thank you.
Any further...
Yeah, I had a question. Sorry, I don't know if should we ask Kim this, or...
Yes.
Okay. Don't elbow me now. So, Kim, I had a question actually for...I mean, you're being put on the spot, but this question was for Ken Gribble, the Parks and Recreation Director. I had a problem with this, because this particular bid here is for $15,985, and it's specifically for repairing cracks on the two tennis courts. Now, bids were put out, and only one bid came in, and that's from Goddard Coatings in Pontiac, Michigan, for $15,985. No other bids came in. Where I have a problem with that is, A, well, if he was here, or maybe you could chine in on this, A, that seems like a lot of money for repairing some cracks. But that's just me. So, obviously, multiple bids would have clarified that much clearly. But to me, almost $16,000 to repair some cracks is crazy. And I know, I've seen it. It's not exactly gorgeous right now.
I believe, though, this is the second time. It says two attempts have been made, so this is the second time that they only got one.
Right.
So, and I do know that it's a lot more expensive to replace the whole court, which we've done in the past.
Of course. So, the two questions I had for Ken, and again, not to put you on the spot here, and you may not have the answer, but I wanted his opinion on the price, because to me, looking at it, seemed like a lot of money to fill some cracks.
Yeah, and I'll bring that to his attention for you.
So, the second question was, and I tend to be a little more aggressive when I want things done. So, to me, putting out bids on the, you know, on the government channel and just getting it out there, we got...I mean, it's great if that works. I mean, if it's effective, and we get three, four bids, great. Now, it's easier to make a decision, which one's got the best price? Are they reputable? We go with that. But the fact that none came in except one, to me, is not enough to make a decision on spending $16,000. So, I would take it to the next level up, which is make some calls, you know, just Google companies, find companies that do stuff like this, or even local companies.
Right.
And get a second or third bid, so we can make a better decision.
Yeah, and I do believe the bids, the information or the advertisements for the bids comes throughout the clerk's office. I don't know that Ken searches the companies out.
Well, and I understand it, but that's what I'm saying. If the bids are put out and not enough come in, then we just take...we do like a resident would, just call around, you know, Google numbers and call around or ask people.
I'll give him your concern.
Because I would want...I would...before I could vote yes on this personally, I'd want to see at the very minimal a second bid, so we can make sure that that number makes sense. Because looking at it from where I'm sitting, it doesn't make sense, that number.
Okay.
And it's easy for them to get this bid, because they're the only bidders.
Yeah, and I'll give him your concern.
And that's maybe where the American Tennis Association can help, too.
Maybe they could tell them that's a reasonable number.
Yes.
Yeah, good idea. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of concurring with Recreation Director Ken Gribble regarding the Parkland Park Tennis Court Restoration Project bid, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
So, that was two...
Dave and I were no.
And Councilwoman Orvath is absent.
Can I ask a question? Well, it's too late, it's been voted out, but I was gonna say, just to have them reconsider this before we move forward.
I think we'll...yeah, we'll communicate that.
Okay.
I'll find out what...why there weren't more bids. The next item...
Mr. Chairman, right in the first paragraph, it's indicated that this is the second time around, maybe that's why there is some strength in my voting yes on it, because they've already tried in two, in a couple of attempts to get a price...
they've already tried into, in a couple of attempts to get a pricing on it, and still come back with one bid. The other, the other potential answer may be that of looking at your last work activity on a tennis court in the city and see how far back in time and the price structure that was offered. If they are similar, then we've got a case to talk about.
Or you could call the school systems. Crestwood High School's got tennis courts. Call, any of the high schools districts have, I believe, have tennis courts.
The Crestwood Courts are partial, city partial school.
No, I'm saying, calling them, ask them who they use. I'm just saying, take it to the next level to look for another company.
Maintain the course, yes.
Fifty grand.
Oh, okay. Well, I would just make more calls to get another company at least. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, item 8A from Mayor Dan Pletko, letter of understanding of right-of-way to Warren Valley Golf Course.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move council concur with the suggestion of the mayor to approve the right of entry onto the Wayne County Golf Course, as indicated in 8A, letter dated, signed by the mayor on April 18th, 2017.
Support? Support by Councilman Berry. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Abdullah.
She was first, though, to be fair.
That's okay, I don't mind.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Okay, thank, thank you, Councilmen, both of you. You know, I wanted to be really clear on something. You know, I wrote the resolution, co-sponsored it with Council Musket, to oppose the development, the sale and development of Warren Valley Golf Course. So I want to start with that, but I do want, as we are stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and we must be accountable to our public, the constituents that we represent, and to be fiscally responsible. You know, I really would like to see this referred back to the administration for more clarity, because there's questions that haven't been answered, whether it's the money, the due diligence costs, what's expected, what is the plan, the vision, public hearing. We know the property is contaminated, because the 25th anniversary of our city did some sampling, the toxicology on the water and the soil there, and they weren't able to proceed with a plan that they had, including the canoeing down the Rouge. So we know that it's contaminated, we know it was a trash dump for the city of Detroit. And when I did some referencing and some discussion with somebody who has more legal expertise, the letter of understanding, the parts of it include a shared vision, priority issues, acknowledgement, reconciliation, and finding and defining the resources, which I'm not really comfortable that that has been done. And I did want to refer to the charter, the city charter, section 18A, that councils shall have the power to hold hearings. And I think, I mean, I understand, you know, I'll use analogy, that this is like test-driving a vehicle. However, when I go into buy a vehicle or test drive, we talk about what I can afford, what I need, and how am I going to be able to maintain it? Can I pay for the insurance? Is this reasonable? So I'm not going to, and I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I would not test-drive a Lamborghini if I could not afford it or maintain it. Now, please don't misunderstand me. I do want to see it remain a green space, but I think we have some responsibility to deliver on this before we give a, an authorization to move forward, which is really what this is.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Berry.
This evening, we had a closed session that began at 6:00, which we proceeded to address all of your concerns. May I ask you what time you got here?
You know what? For personal reasons, I had a situation. I was here at.
And I understand that, but what time did you get here?
Excuse me, Councilman, 6:55. However, it is, excuse me, I will chime in on this. The information included, and no, you're right, I was not here, and I do not have to disclose that, because everyone at this table has missed meetings. Okay, so that's a personal attack, I find it offensive. Mr. Chairman.
Let me share this with you.
However, Mr. Chairman, I have the floor, I would like to not be interrupted, since you gave me the floor, and I don't want this to become a match of going back and forth, but it is clearly defined through Opens Meeting Act and other sources, because I have reached, searched it, I have called others, Michigan Municipal League, the Attorney General for Opinions, and the using of this money, it is public money, must be fully disclosed publicly. You can't do it in a closed session and say, it's okay, we're going to spend your money, but we're not going to tell you where it's coming from, or how it's being used, and not having a plan. So we're going to invest this money, your money, but we're not going to tell you about it.
Well, hold on, because you're misleading people here. No, hold on. You're misleading people, because we did discuss where that money was coming from, and the last statement that was made by the mayor is that there will be full disclosure to the public, there will be full disclosure to the council before we move forward with anything. What we needed to do here tonight was authorize or give them permission to move forward, so we can begin the due diligence. Everything was disclosed, as you stated.
Counselor Miyaki.
Yeah, if I may explain this, this right-of-entry agreement is designed to give the city the ability to end up pursuing due diligence activities in advance of an approval of any sort of purchase agreement. The county is pushing us for a very limited amount of time to do due diligence activities to make sure that the city has an appropriate amount of time to do so. This right-of-entry agreement would allow the city to be able to do those before the approval of a purchase agreement. Any purchase agreement would have to be approved by this body. Any sort of contract for contractors who would be engaged in due diligence activities would have to be approved by this body, along with the cost and estimates, and any sort of a contract, would all have to end up being approved by this body. So this right-of-entry agreement is a very limited agreement designed to move the process forward and to make sure that we don't end up getting into a bind. And by the way, in terms of a lot of the other things that you're seeking, hopefully the county will be reasonable with regard to this. But right now, what they're talking about is, once we end up having a purchase agreement approved, we've got 90 days for due diligence. If we're supposed to have public hearings and public input and all these other things that are going to end up taking place, we are potentially going to run out of time, or they're just going to tell us not to. And one of the things to keep in mind is this, if this purchase agreement is not approved, they will turn back to the developer and end up probably selling the property to that developer, and after that happens, the city's ability to regulate what takes place is going to be compromised. So this is designed to try to give us the maximum amount of time to make sure that we're not prejudiced in this process.
Mr. Chairman. Mayor.
Yeah, we had a very frank, honest discussion, all of us that were there, this, and actually, at the early part of the meeting, Mr. Hattis, you came up and made some comments. This is actually totally reflective of what you said in order for us to accomplish. If you want to kill the project, go ahead, Councilwoman, kill it, but if my basement floods, I'm blaming you. That's all I got to say.
Mr. Chairman, you should maintain order, that was unnecessary, and that is a scare tactic.
Councilman Abdullah.
Acting like that.
Councilman Abdullah.
And blaming one person over somebody, that's wrong.
Well, it's right.
And unprofessional. No, it is incorrect, Mr. Mayor.
Well, some of the things I want to say have already been addressed by the Corporation Council, but I just wanted to clarify it for the residents a little bit. You know, I know we throw the due diligence, you know, words around a little bit, so I just wanted to clarify for some of the residents that are not familiar with due diligence. What due diligence is, you sign a contract. Once you sign a contract, you've agreed on a purchase agreement, on the terms, now the purchaser has the right, and this is what's still in, being negotiated with the county, the purchaser, which in this case would be us, the city, has the right to look into different situations on this particular golf course. So in this case, it could be physical situations, such as whether, you know, we could keep it as a golf, whatever it is. And I think we want to look into, in addition to legal situations, like the title work, if this ever can be sold by us, deed restrictions, I mean, just anything and everything. And that's what they are in the process of negotiating the specifics of what can be looked into as far as due diligence. And then at that particular point, if we as a city are not satisfied with the results of the due diligence, depends on how it's written, what conditions are in there, then we have a right to cancel the contract and all bets are off. Now, with this, and correct me if I'm wrong, but with this, I just want to make sure I clarify, and I can't discuss the things that were discussed in the last meeting, the earlier meeting on this, but I just want to clarify, and specifically in regards to understanding of right-of-entry, per the Corporation Council, if you don't mind. This will, this will, this will help us as a city, because a lot of the due diligence stuff could be costly. The advantages of something like this, we could do some of the preliminary due diligence and not cost us as much money before we decide if we're going to go into the purchase agreement, and then the possibly more expensive due diligence after the purchase agreement is signed. I just want to clarify that for the residents.
Or if we found out something early, after we did the purchase agreement, then we could end up canceling it.
At very little cost of due diligence.
Exactly.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman Dawes, we've done a few real estate deals, so thank you. Councilman Musket.
Mr. Chair, my concern is, and always has been, the cost. And I still don't know what the cost of the due diligence, due diligence is. And if I approve this, does this give the, the, I'm going to say administration for my lack of knowledge, I guess, with no disrespect to you or Gary, Mr. Mayor Gary Miyaki, does this give you the carte blanche of starting to do whatever we need to do to find out if there's any contamination or anything, without us knowing a firm price?
No, we said we would bring these back to you. We said that if I can talk, what was in a closed session, but we said we'd bring all the.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to work my way around that as much as I can.
The intent would be to bring back, we've mentioned at least three different types of areas. There is environmental, there would end up needing to be surveys done, and there would end up being, need to end up being some sort of economic assessment with regard to the viability of the golf course as a golf course, would be things that the city would need to assess, along with the things that were mentioned in terms of legal title work and things along those lines. So the idea would be to end up getting this in place, because the approval process and the actual agreement might, might end up taking longer, but that 90 days may slip away very quickly. And when I was negotiating with the county representatives, they indicated, well, look, we don't, we're, we don't want to do more than 90 days, you'll have to live with 90 days, but we can give a right-of-entry. And I look at it and go, even if we negotiate it to something longer than 90 days, which is, I don't know if that will happen, this allows us to end up having more time. This would be advantageous, I think, to the city. And I don't really see a downside in approving this. And anything in terms of, like we said, individuals who would do, the individuals or firms who would do the due diligence would be brought back to this body before they would end up actually starting to engage in those activities.
For the authorization for the spending.
That is correct.
Mr. Chair, just for clarity purposes, though, while we are doing the understanding of right-of-entry, the county can still sell it hypothetically to purchaser B.
That is correct, as a practical.
It would not be a good move, but I'm talking from a legal standpoint, they can. So I just want to make sure, clarify, because this does not bind them to us.
That is correct.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure, clarify that.
Yeah.
It's not a purchase agreement.
I just still wish I knew what the cost of the due diligence was. I mean, we had a meeting at 6:00, and it's 9:20, and I'm asked to vote on it.
All we're, all we're, all we're looking for, and I think you understand it, is the right to proceed to learn what those due diligent costs are going to mount up to be.
Because that's going to, but that costs us something.
Well, it does, it's obvious, but to do nothing will cost you the sale of the property. To do not, to sit on our hands and do nothing, we gain nothing by it. We're going to have to spend a little to learn whether or not this is going to be to our advantage or not. And I think, I think we all agree that, that this piece of property is a huge asset to the city.
There's no question about that in my mind whatsoever.
We need to spend a little to learn if we, if we can do it. And we did talk about, we did talk about an outline of, an outline of steps that were going to be taken, and what those steps were going to be costing us, and hopefully we can cap our cost on it, but at this point, we need to give him permission to move forward.
For the city to move forward. Any other discussion?
Chairman, the.
Councilman Kozinski.
About going into details of closed session, we have known before this closed session that whoever gets that property is going to expense the city one way or another, because we have already been told at the town hall meeting that we are responsible for certain actions that have to be taken to protect against the flooding and other difficulties that we already have potential for visualizing beforehand, so that the council and the administration are taking the appropriate steps to protect us against horrendous expenses, no matter who gets it. And the advantage of the city taking these steps, that we get control of who gets in there, likely, hopefully, the city, as opposed to somebody else who has a carte blanche to expense us, ad infinitum, no end to it, and we would have to pay.
Yeah, Wayne County has told us that, that they're not going to, they're not interested in continuing it as, as a golf course. So, and there's been several proposals bannered about.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
You know, I think everyone here opposes the sale and development, obviously. We would all, and we want to see it remain a green space, recreation, golf course, whatnot. But the question that I'm hearing, and again, we are the stewards of the taxpayers' dollars and represent our residents' interest for those dollars' use. My concern is, the plan, the vision has not been discussed necessarily, publicly, which should be part of the conversation. And insofar as saying that the city doesn't have anything control if it goes to this development, they're going to have their due diligence of 120 days upon the purchase agreement as well, but our planning commission still has oversight, so there is that local control as well. And I, just a big concern, if, you know, you're, we get into this, what happens, the if questions, we're stuck holding the bag if we buy ourselves a golf course and the property. Now, I want it saved as much, but I would honestly like to see, and it should have been bid out, to other professionals, like you said, Councilman Kozinski, you said this, like the golfing magazines and, but that's already water under the bridge, but I do have concerns for potential liability on the taxpayers' dollars, and including where does it come from in the budget? That should be fully disclosed as well to the public. And I know it will.
And it all will.
Thank you.
And a point of order, the property's owned, single-family residential, and this is a big enough under state law, would not go through, it would go through the state big planning, it would supersede a lot of our local planning laws.
Thank you.
Would not have much control.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of concurring with Mayor Pletko regarding the letter of understanding is outlined in 8A, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
That was Councilwoman Clayton and Councilman Musket, no. The next item on the agenda, item 8B, also from Mayor Pletko, River Oaks Elementary School Annual Cleanup Parade.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve and grant permission to River Oaks Elementary School to hold their annual cleanup parade on May 25th, 2017, at 2:00 p.m. Police Chief Gavin and Fire Chief Brogan have approved the route and will provide any services as they may require, as outlined in 8B.
Second. Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9A, reports from city officials, from Treasurer John Riley, investment of funds report for March 31st, 2017.
Mr. Chairman, this is a received note and file.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Oh, thank you, I was, yes, thank you.
See, I believe this is received.
It is received, yes, so move to received note and file, please.
Moved by Councilwoman Clayton, supported by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
I had a quick question for Treasurer John Riley.
A second.
In just curiosity, obviously, I mean, remembering my finance background in college way back when, but I'm just curious, in regards to the library investments there, we have the different funds there, and they were at .595, .94, .77. Most specifically, the one with CP Morgan Stanley Nationwide Building at .94, and I'm just curious, is.
And I'm just curious, is there any collaboration between, you look at the bottom one there with the building, that one's at .45, the next one's at .45. Who makes these decisions as far as which funds we go with? Because the one is paying, you know, the .94, and I know it would have been probably maybe started at a different time, I'm not sure, but it's doubled the amount of interest coming in.
So, obviously, it's the amount of dollars that we're investing. So, the one that's under the library fund is a million dollar investment, and commercial paper is normally sold in million dollar lots. Sometimes I try to pool dollars together so that I can put a library fund with a water fund to, so to, to make a million dollar lot. But these other ones are so small that they wouldn't be, you know, they wouldn't be able to fit into that type of size of investment. So, the, the one that you listed under.
They would or would not be able to?
Would not be able to.
Oh, okay.
So, the building authority one is, you know, you see it's $20,000, okay? So that's basically a commercial paper. So, commercial paper rates, I mean, I mean, as a certificate of deposit, certificate of deposit rates are about half of what I can get if I go to the commercial rate market. And so obviously, I attempt to get into the commercial paper market, but it's not always feasible with smaller investments. Now, if, if you also look into the library up, up atop, that .595, well, those are liquid funds, and so the library had a bond payment in the month of April, and so we needed to have this amount of liquid funds to make the bond payment, and so then, you know, and for their operating expenses. And so, you know, that's why the rates vary depending on the investment and the, the need or the liquidity of the cash.
And the time you had it.
Okay.
Makes sense. Thank you very much. And you're doing a great job. Keep it up.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of receiving, noting, and filing the investment funds report for March 31st, 2017, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9B, from Recreation Director Ken Gribble, spring 2017 soccer allotments. Councilman Kozinski.
I move, council, concur with the request to release the funds for the 2017 youth soccer activity. Check any amount of $1,815 requested to be delivered to Ken Gribble Parks and Recreation Director as indicated in 9B.
Support.
Support, support by Councilman Abdallah. I've been cold soccer for several years, it's a great program. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9C, from Ordnance Enforcement Director Jack McIntyre, sidewalk program.
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move, council, concur and authorize what the ordinance director is recommending to, that a sidewalk program to be conducted by a land cement company.
Construction Inc.
To, to the amounts indicated, the flag of cement, four inch, as indicated in 9C, and also the six inch indicated as item in 9C, and also a fee that is attendant to the processing of a request for action from a particular homeowner. All clearly defined in the item presented by Mr. McIntyre dated March, I'm sorry, April 17, 2017.
Support.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Musket.
$200 is a steal.
It is.
To do especially a six inch slab, I mean.
Six inches is $275. If I had to make that clear.
Yeah, but.
Four inches is $200.
Four and, and in a six inch for 200 each.
Yeah.
Either way, it's $200.
Yep.
And it's a steal at $200.
I think they charge, I think they charge 400 in Dearborn, if I'm not mistaken.
That's a, that's a steal.
It is.
Six bag, if it's a six bag cement mix, that's a, that's a steal.
The only question I had, Jack, have you dealt with this company before?
Oh, yeah.
In other words, is it quality work?
They're a staple.
Yeah, we currently isn't.
They, they do an excellent job. They do a lot of, already, they do a lot of city work, especially for the DPW department. He does a really good job.
Great. Thanks.
This is a matter of information, Mr. McIntyre. This really takes the city off the hook of putting up money in large amounts with regard to the general fund, which was frequently in the past paid by owners as they put it on the tax rather than come up with the money at the time the transaction is made.
Yeah, we're, Chrissy and I, if, if this is approved tonight, Chrissy and I are going to get right on advertising it tomorrow. This is a completely volunteer program, so they're going to be coming to us asking to be included in this program.
One other question that piggybacks the suggestion of using A-Land. Suppose a homeowner chooses to recognize that they need some cement work and choose another provider, would that be permissible?
You mean if they wanted to do it independently on their own?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
There's no, there's no restriction as to who can do the job.
No.
Except that A-Land is giving these prices as Councilman Musket indicated are rather attractive.
Correct. Yep, they, they, we looked at their bid that they submitted to Garden City for a similar program. We felt like they had, they offered a really good price, and we already know the reputation, they do a really good job, so.
And permit, the permit to process for.
There's, we'll, we'll build.
For the benefit of the homeowners, how, how will that all work out?
Uh, we'll be able to pull it under one permit, and then what we'll do is, they are going to be charged administrative costs to process the, you know, the scheduling and all that type of thing.
That's where the $75.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Councilwoman Clayton.
Um, I just wanted to say, I think the pricing is great. In particular, you know, you have the administration fee, $75, which is very reasonable for that, you know, and I asked, I want to ask you, because I know you just said about promoting it, so I wanted to see what means you're going to do, what avenues of communication to get the word out to the residents?
We're, we're going to do a press release, we're going to advertise that as a completely volunteer program. It's going to be posted on the websites. I go to a lot of the city, or the city's association meetings, along with other officials from the police department, so we'll be getting the word out that way as well to all the local. What's interesting is this actually came to us because there are a lot of folks that we are addressing sidewalk issues with. A common thing that would come back is that they couldn't find a company that would be willing to come out and just do two slabs.
That's true.
So Chrissy really, you know, talked, she talked to me about this, and she said, this is probably a good opportunity for us to talk to a company that's already doing this. So it makes sense for him because he's going to come out and do, you know, an entire area. We've split it up into zones of folks we already know. We already know there's at least 70 customers already that are interested.
I think to piggyback, were you all done?
Yes, I would just say, thank you.
Just to piggyback on that, you're right, because if, I mean, our business, when you call a company and just do one slab, they're going to charge you way more than $200.
Right.
And I think Dearborn's at 400, if I'm not mistaken, so that's a great deal.
Yeah, the biggest, the biggest cost, and this is, you know, we, we, we clearly did it, we had, I talked with the mayor about this. So many folks were coming back to us and saying, I just can't afford $1,000 to replace two slabs. So Chrissy and the mayor and I talked about this program. The, the main cost is the cement pickup, so for him to have all that cement in the truck, just to come out and do two slabs, it's not cost effective for him, so it's going to be a great program.
Good job.
Completely volunteer.
I have another question for you, Jack, if you don't mind. Were you all set, Lisa?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Um, what about concrete leveling? Is that something that we, in our ordinance, we head on to, and then who would be doing that?
He will do that.
If a resident got hit with that.
He can do that, too.
Oh, he can do it.
We've already talked to him about the leveling, too. It's going to be the same, if he's going to come out and do work on a slab, it's going to be the, the price, even if it's just a leveling, because there's, it's labor intensive to do that as well.
So it's $200 per slab for concrete leveling?
Per slab, whether it's four by four, four by five, four by six.
Because usually for concrete leveling, you can't do just one, you got to do.
Correct.
Multiple.
Right, and if it involved where he had to cut roots out or something, he would do all that, level it, and put it back down, and.
All for 200.
Correct.
Well, good job, guys.
Thank you.
And gals.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, also from Ordnance Enforcement Director Jack McIntyre, demolition of property on John Daly, Van Born, Ziegler, Harding, and Yale.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move, council, concur with Ordnance Director Jack McIntyre and authorize the demolition of the five properties indicated in 9D at various locations and at various pricing, not to exceed $46,610 for all properties to be removed.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilman Musket. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair. Uh, Councilwoman Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question. Certainly, I, I know we have McMillan here that they submitted a quote, and of course, they demoed the homes along Hanover. And my question was, even though you're obviously familiar with the work and have been satisfied with that work, my question is, is who else, did we have opportunity for others to bid on these homes or submit quotes?
Real quick, just, I just wanted to mention with Councilman's motion, if it could also include a payment upon completion. We, we have just a little bit of time left in this budget year, and we have just enough money to cover the cost. One of the things I like about McMillan is that they're available to us 24 hours a day. I mean, Kira, who runs their office, I just spoke to her Saturday night around 11 o'clock at night. They also connected us with MWV, which is the company that came in to remove all the hazmat material, which is a whole new process now that is very involved. And they came, that particular company works, not exclusively with McMillan, but they have a really good partnership, so they're able to come in at a, a much lower bid than we were getting from other companies to remove the hazmat. In some cases, it was half, the price was half of what it was from other companies. So what my thought is, we have at least nine more properties that I'm planning to go for demolition. In fact, two that we were just gifted from the county, one on Joy Road and one on Powers. They're also slated for demolition, and, you know, I thought, since I can't do those till the next budget year in July, we certainly could, we'd have more freedom and, and time to go out for bid, so, if that's acceptable.
Yes, I'd like to see us go out for bids because we just never know, and that's why I said, you're, you're familiar with them, you've worked with them, you're satisfied. But in all fairness, we should always be going out for bids.
So the maker of the motion and the supporter agree to the amendment of payment upon completion?
Yes. Sure.
I, I had a question for.
Uh, Councilman Abdallah.
So I had a question, I'm not sure if this is for Jack or for Chrissy, but in regards to, if you remember, we did the Hanover demolition, and those, at least from my recollection, were in a, in a ballpark of around $12,000, maybe it was even 13 or 14, wasn't it? Or, I'm just wondering, why is this so much cheaper? Because on some of these.
This, this, we went out for bid twice in the last five months, and this company came in, like you guys remember, tens of thousands of dollars cheaper than the other companies. So this is acceptable, he used the other ones by charter, it's, it's fine. But the reason why it's so much cheaper is because they did them in bulk. The problem we have with the HMGP grant is that they have to come down within 90 days of purchasing. So when I had the first group in bulk, and we demoed three houses, it was a lot cheaper. The last one, it was a little more expensive.
Right.
On, it's also with the, on different levels, too. A lot of the ones had second stories.
Correct.
The one that we just demolished on 23530 Hanover, the fire department took pictures on, that one was a single story, so that one was cheaper. Jack also has one of his properties, it's just a foundation on that property, so there's, it depends, and it varies. If we have a big chunk of them, we're more than willing to go out for bid, but it, it does take extra amounts of money to go out for bid, and they are coming in super cheap, and it's within five months that we just went out for bid, not once but twice. And they're doing a really good job. They're quick, they've got all their state licenses. He said, not only is this new group the military, is it military minority veterans, women that are doing the abatement, they're doing it cheap, and, and it's a great organization that, I mean, veterans and women, I pro them, so it's.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of concurring with Ordnance Director McIntyre regarding the demolition of the properties on John Daly, Van Born, Ziegler, Harding, and Yale, and payment upon completion of the work, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9E, that was added on to the North Dearborn Heights Baseball League Parade.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Councilman Musket.
Uh, I move, council, approve the North Dearborn Heights Baseball League's request for permission to hold their annual opening day parade on Saturday, May 6th, 217, at 10:00 AM. Police Chief Gavin and Fire Chief Brogan have both approved the route and will provide any services that may be required as outlined in 9E.
Second.
Support by Councilman Kozinski. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 11A, resolution of appreciation in honor of Dearborn Heights 911 dispatchers and first responders for National Public Safety Telecommunications Week from Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Councilwoman Clayton.
All right, and if I may, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution that is presented in 11A, and just want to note a few things. And as you had read, there was a National Public Safety Telecommunications Week earlier in April, so we wrote this in response to show our appreciation, and I did include all of our first responders in this resolution, by the way, because I do believe they work together, and they are definitely the most important people that you may or may not know or see. And we cannot thank them enough for what they do every single day when they go to work. And so it, it recognizes our police, our fire, and our 911 dispatchers that take those calls, a very stressful job. And I'm not going to read the entire thing, but certainly they exhibit compassion, understanding, and professionalism during their performance of their job and keeping our community safe and responding to the residents' needs. And most importantly, if you have ever made a 911 call, and the way they handle those calls, the response, the calmness, because most of us are pretty excited during times like that, and elevated, I think they should be recognized more often, if not daily. So thank you. So move to adopt, sir.
Support.
Uh, those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 13A, new business license renewals for, new license business renewals for Antonio's Cucina Italiana, Applebee's, and Denny's Gin Mill.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kozinski.
I move, council, concur over the approval of the three renewals of business licenses in Dearborn Heights under category 13A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Barry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. That ends the regular business portion of our meeting. Is there any announcements?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
From anybody at the table?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just two announcements, please. Want to thank all of our volunteers that came out this past weekend on Saturday, April 22nd. We had several students from Crestwood National Honor Society, as well as the Riverside Middle School Kiwanis Builders Club and the Hillcrest Kiwanis K Kids. And they went out and cleaned yards, did spring cleanups for over thirty homes. We actually ran out of time, but they did a great job cleaning up homes for senior citizens and disabled residents in our community. And we will be scheduling a second date on May 15th, or, I'm sorry, it must be the 15th, yes, so the second Saturday in May. And this second announcement I had is on behalf of the Crestwood High School Drama Department, and they will be hosting a free complimentary show for senior citizens on Thursday, April 27th at 11:00 a.m. And their production is Into the Woods, which is a wonderful musical, it's a favorite. Again, it's a free show at Crestwood High School, which is 1999 Beach Daily. And again, 11:00 a.m. And I want to invite everyone, I will be providing your snacks complimentary to all of our seniors that attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilman Musket.
I just want to thank the administration, I'm sure it's Mr. Mayor, Dan Piletko, for honoring our seniors today at a special luncheon for them. They're well-deserved, they do a lot of hard work in the city. And I want to thank our associate director, Kim Constance, and her staff for doing such a great job. You put together one heck of a party, let me tell you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? This Saturday, starting at nine o'clock, is the Ekor's Creek Cleanup at Swapka Park. We have two of our watershed stewards here today, Steve Roberts and Steve Ray. So nine o'clock, all volunteers are welcome.
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty registration.
Right.
And we'll have hot dogs and chips and hand washing materials for all those who participate. Director Cafferty?
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to talk about a couple of upcoming events. First off, I want to thank everyone who worked on the book sale. We raised over twenty-six hundred dollars for the library, some of which will be going towards new portable projectors. Thanks to everyone at the Friends of the Library and Bill Deckard, who once again helped remove some of the books post-sale. Thanks, our clerk stopped by and worked a few hours as well, so thank you very much. And thanks to everyone who came out, I hope you had fun. Next, this Thursday, April 27th, at Carrollton County Library at 7:00 p.m., come on out for our program First Impressions. Ever see or visit homes where you drive up and feel a sense of welcome, delight, and awe? Big or small, contemporary or cottage, this presentation will take you on a tour of America's walkways. Take home some great ideas as Julia Hoffley, editor of Michigan Gardener, helps make your home entrance unforgettable. And I'm glad, though, ladies from Garden Club are still here, I wanted to thank them publicly. They do donate every year for some gardening books for the libraries, and I wanted to thank them for that as well. And that is all for now. Thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Director Cafferty, thank you. Any other announcements? Any other announcements from anyone? All right, if any members of the public, any residents want to come up and state their name and their street they live on? Art, we're going to keep our comments...
You know my name already.
Clean and...
I said, we're going to keep our comments clean.
It is clean. I wash my hands every day.
Rated G.
Huh?
No more rating than, nothing above G-rating.
Yeah, well, no, I just want to thank her for what she's done for me, and Jack for what he's doing for me and working with me. And it's just that, when you say senior citizens, what is it when you're a senior citizen and you're over that amount? You're older than a senior citizen. So it kind of makes me feel good that I'm around and I can aggravate people. And it's just that, I want to thank Jack and the other police officer for giving their time for me. And it's like, I looked at a lot of buildings, and I want to reopen a shop, but they won't let you reopen the shops. And Taylor and Down River, they will not let you reopen a body shop. So it looks like I'm hitting the wall. So I want to appreciate everything that everybody's done for me. And everybody have a nice day.
Thank you. Thank you. Here we go.
All right.
Good job. The next person to come up states your name and your street you live on.
Mr. Chair, just want to make a quick comment. I guess now that I'm over 62, I can use that as an excuse to be ornery, right?
Somebody might beg to differ with you.
Pleasure. Go ahead, Ms. Counselor Hades.
Just a quick, quick question. I know Mr. Berry mentioned something about there was costs mentioned with respect to this, and I guess it's a pre-due diligence is what we're talking about with this letter of understanding?
It's a right of entry to do due diligence prior to an approval of a purchase.
I mean, the due diligence with respect to a purchase, that would be after a purchase agreement is signed, so this is sort of going to give us a lead-in to let us know what the heck we're, what's, what we're looking at and so forth. And there were costs mentioned with respect to that. All right, and I appreciate the concern with respect to any caps on what type of work. I'm sure you, there's certain work you've already outlined to this council as to what needs to be done before you finalize anything and so forth. I guess, since we do have Mr. Abdullah, and I'm glad we have a realtor up there and other people that are involved in properties, and I'm certain, before you purchase any property, you're well aware you, it's nice, before you go in with an offer, you're going to have a preapproval, you're going to have financing in place. We're no different in many ways, because as a city, we, our financing should be in place. And again, I think it's a great deal to go over there and grab that golf course, but I'd like to know that the financing's in place. How are you going to obtain it? Is it involve, what the particulars are? And I think it's something, since that aspect really doesn't involve negotiating with the county, the county doesn't care where you're getting your money from, just be able to prove it, provide it when you're coming to close. And if you don't have funds, they're not going to close nothing and so forth. So I'd like to know, as a resident, I'd like to know where it's coming from. That may involve maybe opening up a little bit of what the vision for this city is, does it involve moving City Hall over there? Does it involve developing lots? Because by purchasing the property, we become pretty much a land developer. And once we become a land developer, I'd like to know, is it the city that's going to develop it for their own interest? Because once you do that, the 1.8 million is paltry compared to what you're going to incur trying to put up buildings and so forth, and having grading and all of this, and fulfilling all the requirements that are done. And with that same concern, once a purchase agreement, if that's in fact what happens, that a purchase agreement goes forward, I'd like to know that there's some contingencies put in place by this council so that we know what's going to happen with respect to monies that are going to be expended. These are all things that should be answered. And if you don't answer it, then honestly, you're not doing your due diligence. And I'm reminded of the N S P program, okay? And I'm not here to knock a N S P program, but I had the opportunity, and I'll mention it briefly, to look at one of the properties involved in an N S P program. And the roof on that particular house was a newer roof, the windows were newer, the HVAC was newer, yet those same items were included on a bid sheet. And when I asked one of the parties that were involved, why is that, why are those items on the bid sheet along with concrete and other items? I was told, well, that was a mistake. Well, those are the mistakes I want to avoid. And I'll quote a person now, since someone's shaking their head, the girl Sarah that worked for them, she says, Bob, those items shouldn't have been on there. But they were. The other problem I had with the N S P program was contracts that were bid on were allowed to either be reopened. And I don't know if that's par for the course or not. Are other cities doing this? I'd like to know if other cities were doing this? Do we have that type of authority and discretion to open up contracts? And that's my concern, if we go ahead as a land developer or whatever we're going to be in this project, when we come to bid things out, are we going to hold all these contractors accountable for what they're bidding on? They should be doing their due diligence when they bid on a property. When you go and buy a property, our city will issue a certificate of occupancy saying, hey, everything's been done according to plan, property is... It may, well, if it's not of interest to others, it is of interest to me. But I want to know, because otherwise, I don't want to buy something as-is. When you buy something as-is, it's open-ended, and if you've bought property before, you buy it as-is, you take it just like you find it. And some people, to their regret, wish to God they'd never purchased that property. And again, I still say it's a deal at 1.8, but I say you do the right work, I say you put the right contingencies in place so that you don't have costs going all over the place. And that would be, that would be my concern that way. I'd like to know what the criteria is for putting out bids, how are they advertised? Because under the N S P, I believe there was only five contractors, five. And how, how that was done and determined, I don't know, but I think it should be more public, and it's incumbent upon this council to make certain that it's more, more public, and that we're getting fair bids, because there's been questions about bids this evening, about having more bids submitted, just like the fifteen thousand. And yeah, off the top of my head, that may be a great deal, fifteen thousand, for what you're doing, and it may not be. I don't know. But I sure, sure as hell think that I could get in the phone book and say, hey, come on, bid this job. You want to bid this job? That's nothing. That's nothing. With respect to a public hearing, I think the public should have at least the right, if they, if they don't want to give you the input as to what they think should happen over there, then that's their, that's their fault, just like coming out to vote. The last election, I asked the city clerk, and I believe he confirmed it, I believe the one I asked you about, there was 15.9% of the eligible voters in this city voted. Is that correct? And that was it. Now, I'm not getting anything out of this, my kids are raised and so forth, I don't need anything out of this. My concern is basically for the residents of this city. And if the time drags, I'm sorry, it's an important issue, folks, and it's something that you all need to pay heed to, because we paid dearly for it in the past. I can sell my house and walk away from this, and I don't need this, okay? No one's paying me whatever it is an hour and so forth. And you have certain powers under this charter, it's incumbent upon you to use those powers, okay? Not only for the best interests of the residents, it's for the best interests of this administration, and they should be held accountable, regardless of who's in power in this city, okay? And the city should run efficiently, and I think it's incumbent upon you to check with other cities, see what contractors were successful in other cities and didn't open, have their contracts reopened, and they stood by their bids. Thank you.
Please step up and say your name and the street you live on.
Deb Brown England, Surry Lane. Sometimes, I don't even know what to say to you guys. I think that everybody that sits in the seat up here needs to understand, at least some of you do, need to understand that we have elected you to represent us, okay? And act as respectful adults with one another and with the rest of the community. And I think it's about time that that started to happen. I find it ironic that the one council person that missed months and months of study sessions and city council meetings would condemn, you've got to let me say this, I have the right to speak, would condemn Councilwoman Hicks Clayton for being late to one meeting.
Hey, Ms. Hing, if you have, if you have a comment for the councils, the whole, please, any personal attacks or any...
I'm not personally taking, it's obvious. He started this. She was speaking her mind, had every right to, she had the floor. When you attack somebody, that is not representing this city. That is not the city that I live in. That is not who we are. But when you sit up here and it's televised and thousands of people watch it, that's what you represent our city as. Okay, so she may have had a personal issue and was late. This person missed months of meetings, and I understand it was for personal reasons, but you also have to be understanding.
If you have comments for the councils, the whole, let it go.
And the childish outbursts and the bullying of, I'm going to blame you, that's what children do, not adults.
I'm not answering.
That's what children do on a playground, I'm going to blame you if this doesn't happen. You all are adults, last time I checked, and we elected all of you. And it's time that this, you guys start working together as a team and make things happen for the right reasons, and not just argue with others for the sake of arguing. This is absolutely ridiculous, and I think that you or her, an apology.
Thank you. Please step up and say your name and the street you live on.
Good evening, Zohar Abdalhaat 354. I consider lots of you are close friends, but when something is wrong, I have to call on it. I'm not going to shut my mouth, and I hope nobody will take this as a personal attack. Councilwoman Horvath, for medical reasons, she's not here. Mr. Tom, my friend, you missed for reason or not some meeting, that's okay. She missed a meeting, we don't have to make this personal. We are growing people, civilized people, we should act as such. This is an election year, and I understand tension is a little high. And I don't like, Mr. Mayor, you are the father of this city. You don't even put your finger in your child's face. With my respect to you, that was out of line. I'm not going to ask you to apologize to her or not, that's between you and her.
You have your right to your opinion, I agree.
But that wasn't right, especially, it's televised. I understand this is an election year, and the resident in this city have the right to know what happened with the golf course.
I agree.
You were for it at the beginning because of the taxes which going to generate. Mr. Tom, Mr. Ray Musket, Dave Abdullah, Bob, you guys wrote letters asking the county to approve it, because I was for it, okay? And I love it for it, couple of you. That was because there was lack of information on my part and your part, what's going on. When we learned more information, I appreciate that you rescinded your letters. And I changed my mind, because I believe my concern was, before anything, for the Riverside School and for the taxes which might generate from that project. But right now, I believe the 1.8 is basically changed to buy 255 acres. But, on the other hand, we need, and I ask the administration and I ask you, time after time after time, I'll will walk with you door to door if you need to do bond. And I did that before. I did for the Hadley override, I did for the schools. I believe in my city, I believe in the goodness of my neighbors, my residents in this city. But we deserve to know what goes on behind the closed doors. I'm going to ask you a question, Mr. Mayor, if you allow me. Did we ask at any time to delay the purchase of this property until next year or not? I want yes or no.
Did we ask? I'm not sure I understand the question.
Did you ask the county to delay the purchase of the property until next year?
No.
You never did?
No.
Okay, thank you. Now, when we sent the letter to the county, did we put, we purchased it at 1.8, and with contingency that we will do all these tests you want to do?
No, let's...
Mr. Mayadke?
What happened is, is the county executive ended up sending a letter to the mayor saying that he would be willing, or the county would be willing, to consider selling it to the city. And frankly, that was probably based on the fact that he was going to have problems on his commission with being able to necessarily sell to the developer who they wanted to sell it to. So essentially, where we are right now, just to be clear, is we are negotiating a purchase agreement. We don't have a purchase agreement at this time, and the letter from the county executive was an invitation for us to enter into those negotiations.
And we did send the letter saying we're going to buy it for 1.8, did we, or did we not?
No, we did not send the letter. The letter offered us, it was dated, I believe, April 4th by the county executive, it was sent to me, and he said he would sell the property to the city of Dearborn Heights for the same price that the Hillcrest LLC was to purchase it for 1.8 million. So we began, and as I recall, I took a resolution from the council authorizing us two to begin negotiations. And that's what we, we have promised, that the council will be totally included. My objection is, if I had not, if one of the council members was not, for whatever reason, able to attend that six o'clock meeting, I would have felt more comfortable if they would have just abstained. But comments were made that were directly contrary to what was mentioned at six o'clock. I think that's what agitated Councilwoman Berry, because it gave a misinterpretation, and that's why we got upset because of the fact. I think if she had just sat there, for whatever reason, just said, I abstain, and then, because this doesn't sell the property, I'd have been cool with that. But making statements when you weren't at the meeting, and some of those topics have been discussed, and quite frankly, as Councilwoman Berry said, it was very accurate, they were misleading comments, and that's what made us upset.
This is fine, I don't know what went behind the closed doors. My concern, Mr. Mayor, is... My concern, Mr. Mayor, is we, we accepted to buy property as is for one point eight million. It's a golf course.
We haven't signed any purchase agreement yet, and any costs...
We buy in a golf course.
We're not, if I may say something, we are not buying anything. What we're doing is, we are seeking permission to walk on there and assess the property before we make a decision to buy.
Okay. Did we get any specific time from the county to do this assessment?
Well, let me, let me make sure we're clear. This right of entry allows us to go in in advance, but the idea is, is because the county is looking at us having a very short time, namely ninety days to do due diligence on the size of property. So, we will still have to come back to the council to get any approval with regard to any sort of purchase. The one point eight was actually something that the county executive has insisted on, as well as his representatives in the negotiations. In other words, they feel that they are already making a concession by not selling it to an entity where it would end up being taxable, and the county executive has made it sound like this was consistent with what he wanted in his state of the county address, but it would appear that it's actually based on the idea that there was a concern in terms of him having a lack of support. This is my sense of things. It's not necessarily something that the county folks would say. But the one point eight million dollars is essentially been stated to us as essentially, this is the price, don't negotiate it, we aren't going to negotiate about the price. To just be clear.
I know for a fact, and this is based on conversation with Mr. Evans and other people in the county, that they do want to sell it to us, they prefer to give it to us, they don't want to harm anybody in our city. And I'm not defending anybody here, but for a fact, they want to give it to us, but they want the one point eight. My concern as resident here, I want transparency. Come out, tell us where the money is coming from. I'll be with you, it doesn't matter where you get it from. At the end of the day, it's from our pocket. We paying it, not you, not anybody else, we paying it.
We all pay taxes.
I know, but we paying it as resident.
Oh, we're all in this together.
So, why shouldn't we know where this money coming from? Even if it is from the CSO, I'll be with you. At least we use it for something. Instead, it's sitting in the bank doing nothing.
I, I, I don't agree with your feelings of Warren Evans' regard for us and the residents of Dearborn Heights, however. I think you're wrong.
Maybe, but my conversation was...
Positive. I would concur with the mayor, particularly given some comments that Judge Kaufman...
Based on what it was, what I was told, they want to give it to us. Now, was it something else? I don't know, that's up to you. I don't want to know.
Well, that's another point. Let us two do the negotiations, and we'll fill in the council.
Just let us know what you're doing, so we're not in the dark. That's all I'm asking.
Everything will come back here.
Thank you.
And just so everybody understands, the only reason I don't want people to come up and resurrect an argument is just that, the best way to stop an argument is to avoid it. It's not because I say what was done was right, what was done was wrong, it's just we, you, the, the tempers can erupt again. Steve Ray?
Steve Ray, Parkland Street. I think we're going to need some help this summer in Parkland Park neighborhood. Does anybody know what this is? This is drug paraphernalia. Back when you and I were young, drug paraphernalia was roach clips and zigzag paper. Now, modern day paraphernalia is cigarettos and medical marijuana prescription bottles. These were collected over the curb, along the curb just over a few days. You can imagine what it looks like inside the park itself. Times have changed regarding drugs, but one thing has not changed. When people get high, they get the munchies. Unfortunately, for those of us that live on Parkland Street, the fast food trash, along with the remnants of drug use, are spewed all over the street and on our lawns. Quite a few of the neighbors have a daily ritual to pick up all the trash at the curb and attempt to keep our neighborhood looking decent. In fact, several of these residents have already met with the mayor regarding this issue. The neighborhood along Parkland Park is a diverse community. The makeup ranges from senior citizens, including several who have lived there long before Dearborn Heights was even a city, to wonderful new immigrant families with young children, starting out their new lives in a safe place. The park itself, with its multi-use features of both nature and recreation, is a treasure for our city. Many of our residents, as well as visitors from nearby communities, make daily use of the tennis courts, picnic areas, soccer fields. And of course, we are all familiar with the Dearborn Heights Raiders, who use our facilities for football and cheerleading. I'm sure you will agree, we owe it to both the community residents and the visitors to have a safe and healthy environment. It's not so much the recreational drug use that I'm opposed to. As I said, times have changed. In the privacy of your own home, do what you wish, smoke it up. What I am concerned with is the public behaviors that result from being under the influence. Tomorrow, I invite you to ride, ride down Parkland Street and observe the disgraceful graffiti that now denigrates the upper level restroom facility. Done by somebody, obviously, so high that they couldn't even write straight. I would also like you to see the rubber tire marks that color our street. Evidence of the tire screeching and reckless driving that goes on from hopped up cars, driven by hopped up people, who are barely in control of their vehicles because they are barely lucid. Please come. Please come and witness the cars cruising up and down and the imminent drug transactions that occur right in front of your eyes. These behaviors are unacceptable. They are unacceptable when it involves the destruction of public property and when it endangers the neighborhood children playing on their lawns and in the park. And certainly, it is unacceptable for us to have to clean up their trash. I think we're going to need some help. Thank you.
Have you contacted anyone from the police department?
Yeah, when, when some of your neighbors came out and they kept interesting logs in regards to, and then, Chief, you and I met, we might have to reconvene at...
Less spraying and selling salt. You know, with them again, you know, that four mothers are...
Okay, you got my pledge on that.
You talk about paraphernalia, Steve. It's nice to see you, I haven't seen you in a long time. But you talk about paraphernalia. You know what I've noticed on some streets? The old CO2 cartridges that you're used to using, like BB guns and that, is that, are they now using that as a drug or something?
To get high, yeah.
To get high?
Whipits.
They're called whipits, and they're used to get high.
So, they're, they inhale?
It's an inhalant.
They're everywhere, yeah.
So, they're not shooting squirrels anymore, they're...
Some of the airsoft guns...
Yeah.
They use some version of that, but the majority of the time, it's normally used for inebriation.
There was a case in Oakland County where somebody had a whole tank, they were putting bags over the person's head, and the, a young person died.
That's been a very, it used to be a very common issue in this city. I used to have a fair number of prosecutions a long time ago. We actually have a huffing, is what it's referred to, an ordinance prohibiting huffing, and I think we've probably are one of the earlier ones who did it, but it's been a number of years since I've ended up having a prosecution for, for that.
Mr. Chair?
Charles Musket?
I, I went out there one day last year, somebody called, one of the residents called me there, and I just sat in my car during the day, just to see what went on. And what I witnessed was grown adults, not doing drugs, but they'd get up and go play soccer in the field, and then come back to their car, and they would have someone deliver food, they eat their food, and drink their water, and just dump everything in the street and then leave. And it just amazes me that, you know, like the old days, when, when people were smoking more, and they would take their ashtrays and just dump it in the street. That's so disrespectful to someone, you know, in someone's driveway or right in front of their house. So I, I understand the, I witnessed it, I seen it happen, and, you know, I would think that these guys who are athletic as they were, would have a little more respect than that.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Marjorie Pasquale, Syracuse Street. The reason I'm here today, I had noticed with Telegraph being tore up, I would like to see it beautified, and maybe some flowering trees, bushes, something. And I know money's involved, and being it's a pretty busy highway, that there are certain trees and shrubs that wouldn't be acceptable. But we have a lot of people here in Dearborn Heights, educated people in horticulture, that we could address, and being that it's tore up already, maybe we could consider putting something, I mean, as I said, flowering trees or bushes, because people go to Holland to see their tulips, Michigan, and go to DC to see the cherry trees. In spring, flowers will, I mean, maybe it will lower road rage. I mean, it's soothing, the color is soothing. And so it's just a suggestion, and I know money's involved, but, I mean, I'd personally be willing, maybe put it out in our flyer, our paper. I'd be willing to, I'll buy a tree. I'd buy a tree, I'd buy a dogwood tree, or whatever, whatever a, a think tank would suggest that would be a good idea to put, and I, maybe it would catch on to other communities. Telegraph is a nice highway, but it's a disgrace. I mean, ours isn't so bad, but of course, as you know, you go north, it's, it is, it's a disgrace. Even in Dearborn, it's bad. But that is the reason I'm here, and I hope that you consider it, because I think that it would be, it would put us on the map. I mean, that we, 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 or we, we take pride in our property.
Unfortunately, Telegraph is a state road.
Really?
Yes.
What, you mean, we can plant a tree?
And isn't that the state road?
No, it's a US federal highway, but Sue McCormick told me as part of the Great Lakes Water Authority, new line in there.
Yes.
I was told there was going to be some, because green, yeah, I complained that they just took every tree, and some of those trees were beautiful.
Right. But I didn't know this, now, I mean, because...
US federal, it's US twenty-three.
Okay, but I mean, like, Dearborn...
No, excuse me, not, not twenty-four.
Twenty-three is west of us, twenty-four.
I mean, we have that, we have our, you know, the welcome signs there, the cement, distinguishing signs, and like Dear, Dearborn, they have these beautiful tulips in front of theirs in the spring that pop up. I mean, that's a small thing, but it's something.
Yes.
It's something.
I agree.
And if it is, why are they permitted then to plant flowers?
Here's the difficulty we had with plants, and you might be able to help us. We went to English Gardens, because they're in Dearborn Heights, and they have excellent, and we paid twice to have them put a flower arrangement, and then the salt, I don't know if it was the fumes, killed everything. The other thing that we had a problem with is Dearborn had or hired someone to bring in water, because there is no access point for water, even though there's new water line underneath. So, English Gardens told us that we, that we needed a, a supply of water on a regular basis, and they thought they gave us some pretty hardy plants, but they, both times, they never lasted beyond one season, and they were just covered with salt prime.
So, I'm just a little confused, that, you say it's a US twenty-three then, but we maintain it.
Yes, twenty-four.
No, because it's an entranceway to the city.
So, we're responsible, we're maintaining it.
I went ahead, and in fact, my assistants and I, we went around and we got individuals to make contributions, because those signs are, what, were they quarter of a million apiece? So, the nice entranceway, Tiffa bought one on the south end, one or two, and we had companies and groups that we went. But that was just for the particular sign.
Right.
And then, we wanted some flowers to be around, that's when we went to English Gardens, but...
But, I mean, so, we do, we don't have the legal right to plant anything as far as trees?
Well, you, you have to get, you have to go to MDOT, and, and you have to request, because one of the problems is, they, they don't want items in there, like, our, our signs had to be breakaway because of an automobile, so like, there's certain trees they're going to object to.
Right, I mean, we got some trees that are now, there's some trees that are...
Right.
Sort of surviving, yes. Well, I mean...
We got that strange Christmas tree at Ann Arbor Trail and Telegraph, and every year, I haven't figured out who, but somebody decorates it, and I thank them for decorating whatever it is.
Right, right. Well, I mean, personally, I would, if I came to community and I seen that, that, you know, they had cared about their grounds, I mean, give me a good impression, and I just, you know, as I said, I think Telegraph, it's sad, some of them, some, some parts of Telegraph is, of course, trash wise, but I was unaware of that as far as what you're saying about the, but, I mean, if that's something that, I mean, keep on the back burner in our heads, you've got to go to MDOT, go to MDOT, what's the big deal? I mean, we want to plant some dogwoods. Dogwood is a nice tree, I mean, I don't know, I'm not a horticulturist, but we could, as I said, we could address somebody who is educated in that field.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
I was just going to say, Marjorie, if you don't mind afterwards, we can talk a little bit, so I want to help facilitate that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Motion to move to adjourn?
Yeah, more, tell them first.
I'm sorry. You have two.
Drapkowski again, Columbia Street. I'd like to know where we're at with the nine eleven consolidation, and if we're going to withdraw our letter from them. And then maybe we could put our officers on the street to take care of some of these drug problems instead of in the dispatch center.
Right, we're, we're the...
We're not pursuing it, that resolution that was passed, was passed for the purposes of obtaining a state grant to study it. That's as far as it went. Studies completed, as far as I know, there's been no other motions.
All right, then, when are we going to get some more officers on the street instead of answering the phones?
If, if I answered that in a truthful way, I'd get accused of taking shots at somebody again. It's not the administration's fault.
Vince, we, we got another budget to do after this, so, the, the nine eleven, the, you don't usually withdraw a letter of intent that's, but there's no, there's no contract proposed.
So, it's off the table?
I want to see, it's off the table, on the table.
Well, you got one more, Jones, I should have just had, yes, it's off the table.
At this point, there's nothing that's come before us for us to vote on, to move forward with it. I think as far as we're all concerned, at this point, there is no interest.
It's on the back burner.
Because it seems like the city's putting too many irons into the fire. With the golf course, the nine eleven, and everything else you got going on.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Robert Marion, I live on sixty-two thirty-one North Island Street, and it came to my notice that the code guy came by my house, because I have a six by twelve trailer in my driveway. It's behind my gate, and they told us that it was a fire hazard, and it was against the code. In two thousand and six, I had him come out, I had a boat and a trailer. They said, oh, you could put the boat behind the, your garage, and you can keep the trailer in the drive, because it was under eighteen feet. As long as you can close your gate and get there, it was fine. And now they're saying that, obviously, they, someone misinterpreted the code. And I feel that if I put my trailer on my yard, it would look uglier than it does in my driveway. It has tires, air in it, it's plated, and I don't think that it's an eyesore. I think that it would be an eyesore if I put it on my property, on my lawn, if I had to build a pad for it. And if I look around the neighborhood here, I see there's huge issues other than this. I mean, I drove down the street here many times, I'm sure the code guy goes down Fenton a thousand times a, a year, but I still see boats larger than my trailer in the front yard, in the driveway. So, you know, I mean, there's a lot of other issues, I think, that maybe this ordinance isn't correct, and maybe it, it needs to be corrected as far as, is it an abandoned trailer? Is it a rusted out trailer? Are the tires inflated? Is it just an eyesore, or is it somebody's personal property? I mean, I've defended this country for six years in the service, and I try to keep my yard as good as anyone else's in the yard, and I, I try not to break the law too much because Lee would come after me. But, that's, that's what my thing, so, I tried to get things solved down at the code place, and I, and the building guy. And obviously, the building guy went to my house, and he forgot why he was there, and I hadn't been able to bet back. I called there today, and he was out. So I'm still up in the air on that. I have the first to move it, other than that. If I have to move this trailer, it's going to cost... than that. If I have to move this trailer, it's going to cost me $600 a year just for a lot fee. And then, if I wanted to insure it, it'll probably be twice that. If I keep it on my property, I'm covered there. I keep my property safe, close to me, and, and that's why I'm here. You know, I mean, what do I have to do in order to change this ordinance, or to make it as far as what's, what's clean and what's not clean?
Yeah, you would have to speak to our...
Have you spoke with Jack McIntyre from the ordinance department?
I spoke with a few people there. I've been there a couple times. Code's code. I mean, I understand why they're in place.
I can.
You know? If I thought that it was something that was taken from my city, or I would, you know...
I think Jack is going to address you. He's walking up to the mic here.
You know, sometimes the, the, the common answer is that it would require a resolution to change the ordinance. But the current ordinance does not allow for, or really doesn't allow for trailers of any kind. But anything that's stored on the property, other than a vehicle that's parked in the driveway, has to be stored off of the driveway area. And you're allowed one item to be stored off of the driveway area. But exclusive of that, trailers are not, under a section code, they're not allowed on the property at all. So...
See, because my question is, if I parked my vehicle, which is a van, if I parked it behind my house, it would take a larger space than my trailer. If you talk about the fire department, then we'd have a harder time moving that to get in there. Not that they're going to bring a fire truck or ambulance back there anyway. Our lots are small on that lot, you know? So, to me, I just feel that, what's the difference between my vehicle and a, and a trailer? It's a vehicle. It's, it's what I use. It's my property. I don't, I don't, you know, have like thousands of things in my yard. I have my van, and I have a trailer. I don't see that where that's an issue.
Mr. McIntyre, do we have a, is there a, a length requirement of what they could, sort of like a boat, or...
Yeah, not for a trailer, not for a storage trailer or a porch trailer. Those are not allowed. But for a boat, or for...
Or a pop-up camper.
Or a camper, they have to be less than 18 feet. And they have to be stored off the driveway on a pad that's...
On cement.
On cement, right. Where it has to be a cement pad.
And you have, what kind of a trailer is this?
A 6x12 enclosed trailer.
Like a utility trailer to put things in it, or snowmobile or something?
Yes. Well, just stuff, yeah.
The only way that he would be permitted, the ordinance would have to be changed by this body. Yeah, and if, if you've been written a ticket for violating the ordinance...
It's not a ticket.
It's not a ticket, it's a warning.
It was just a correction reminder.
Any ordinance change takes some time. You know, it's not going to happen overnight. But I understand what you're saying. You don't think it's a, it's a...
Right. I don't, I don't, I don't feel that I should be expected to change my way of life. That's what I think. And that's why I'm here. I'm here to speak my mind, you know? And like I said, I could go out here, and I could write home. He said, the guy says, hey, bring me the addresses. What, do I need to do your job? Maybe I should be on the payroll here. I mean, if you want to sit here and pick it. But I think that not everybody has a trailer. But I would say that at least 5% of the people in this city have some sort of a trailer, or a camper, or a boat, or something. I mean, look at how many, how many licenses are on boats in this state. It's, it's one of the largest in the country, as far as licensing in boats. And not everybody keeps it at a marina or a storage area. And I don't know what it is that I need to do to prove to you that I am not the only one in this city that's violating this code. And I really think there should be a difference in the violation of the code. If it's an eyesore, that's one thing. But to me, to put a vehicle on my grass, or I'd have to build a pad if it's over 2,000 pounds, but since it's under 2,000 pounds, I can use paver bricks, that needs to be six inches larger than my trailer, would, would take for my lawn. It would take for my yard.
Just to be, just to correct you, though, not for a trailer. Trailers are not allowed. Storage trailers, pole trailers, trailers that you use to haul cars, any of those kind of things, that, the ordinance states that the trailers are not allowed. If you're talking about campers and boats...
Well, I use this trailer for, for my vacations, for, for my, my, my relaxation purposes.
Yeah, again, look, I, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I wasn't part of the conversation, but I was in the office when you were talking to the officer. And the only way that, you know, we can't, the ordinance is there. If we started making exceptions, for one, then we'd have to make exceptions for...
I'm not asking to make an exception. I'm asking to change it.
Right, and I...
That's what I need to do here.
That's what you...
If that ordinance needs to be changed, it's there for a reason.
Maybe not changed, just modified.
Modified, but the real question is, why did it exist to begin with? So, what type of...
Well, the reason...
What type of problem did it, what type of problem did it bring to the table initially?
Well, the, well, I'll tell you what I heard from one of the code guys. He said, well, I live in the south Dearborn Heights, and we have this issue in our neighborhood, because they have rusted trailers, and their tires are flat, and they're just eyesores. I said, well, then, maybe you should be in that neighborhood. That's what I told him. Because, you know, like I said, if I built a privacy fence up in the front, no one would even see it.
True.
I see you gave us some food for thought on the ordinance. And I think we could look at it and see what we can and can't do, and come to a conclusion. But, you know, that's all I could promise, that we could take a look at it.
Because what you're doing to me is you're actually doubling my summer tax by doing this.
Well, I'm not doing it. I mean, that, that ordinance has been there probably since 1963, when we became the city.
Right. But what I'm saying is, in 2006, I discussed the same thing with everybody, and everybody was fine with it, because it was, as long as it was under 16 or 18 feet, it fit behind the house, it was fine. I just want to know that if somebody's redetermining the same thing. I mean, if I got an okay back then, why has it changed now, if it's the same thing?
I could say one thing, that our ordinance department, in the last couple of years, have, has worked through multiple issues of what was before and now. And, and they've got a good handle on the, on the ordinances now, and they've gone through them. And I know for a fact that, and I've had my disagreements with that department, but they, they're pretty knowledgeable, and they've tried to fix all of this stuff of what we failed to do ordinance-wise in the last few years.
Because normally, ordinance are only, they come out there if somebody complained.
And that's true.
You know? But obviously, they were taking a sweep of the neighborhood.
Well, and that was, that was announced.
And I believe that, because, you know...
And that was announced. That was publicly announced, that they would do sweeps. So...
Mr. Chair.
You know, in defense of the ordinance department.
Yeah.
They've learned a lot in the last couple of years on what we, as a city, have failed to do and are trying to correct it. So, the only thing I could promise is, we could look at the ordinance and see if it's a possibility of changing it. That's all I could promise.
And so, how much time are we talking here?
Director McIntyre.
I don't, that's, that takes a while to change an ordinance.
I got to the first.
It does take a while.
Councilman Muscat is correct. There's something, you know, I'll be the first one to admit that there was ways that we interpreted the ordinance years ago that wasn't completely correct. We've got a lot of very savvy, really smart people in the, in the department that have even showed me some things that I was not clear on, and they've showed, and we've interpreted things a different way. One thing I can offer to you, and you can call me tomorrow if you want to, is we can, we can definitely give you some more flexibility on time. There, that's not a drop-dead date. And we did that even with some of the campers and motorhomes when we first started to enforce that. We gave people even sometimes a whole season to kind of come up with another solution. Because what we, our end result is that we want things to be correct according to the ordinance. We're not trying to make things uncomfortable for people or inconvenient. So, call me tomorrow. We can definitely, you know, give you some flexible time to come up with a different solution, so...
Like I said, I'm not here to try to cause a problem. I'm here just to try to...
I understand. You're trying to fix your own problem.
Try to just, just keep my problem straight.
Thank you.
And as far as the golf course goes, there's got to be some kind of, I mean, whenever I played golf there for years, there's always a line, there's a waiting list. So, if they're not making money, it's obviously, you know, I mean, even if you buy a golf course, it'll mean you can run it. But I just think that, you know, that's been here our, my whole life. And how many, how much money is it going to cost us if they sell it to someone else, and we have to do drainage, or if there's pollution? How much more would that cost us than if we were able to buy it and have it professionally run? Normally, when a county wants to get rid of a property, they'll get, they'll sell it to you for a dollar, as long as you can maintain it and show that you can handle it without losing it to someone else, so...
Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I agree with them.
Art, you were already up.
Yeah, I was back here again. Yeah, well, it's just that I got to go to court next, next month.
Art, we're...
For having a trailer in my driveway. And my driveway goes straight up, and then it's got a side on it, this side. And it's parked on the cement, not on the dirt. And they told me to move my cars from the backyard. It was muddy out, and I still only had three days to move them.
Art, I understand this is an ongoing concern. They've been out there, but we...
And it's just that I've been going through this for quite a while. And if there's a neighbor that's complaining about what I'm doing, tell them to put it in my mailbox, and don't put their name on it. Let me know what I'm doing wrong. Because I do plow the street, and I've been stopped at the corners with a police officer and told me I can't do that. And I plow the street. The city does not plow the street. They plow the main streets, but they don't plow our street. And that's what I've got to say. And Jack, I appreciate you working with me. I really do. But I still got to go to court. And when you're making only $700 a, a month, and that's what I live on, and every time you turn around, just like these gas prices. When I had the gas station, a gallon of gas costs 30 cents a gallon. And we pumped your gas in your tank ourselves. You pump it now, and you pay more than $2 a gallon.
Thank you.
I've been here for a long time. I've been here since Telegraph was just a one-lane street.
Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
All right. Well, you have a nice day, everybody.
Move to adjourn.
I'll go to adjourn. Good evening, everyone.